Welcome to the March 11th meeting. The General Assembly's just declared it No More Day in Rhode Island, and that's against domestic violence. And so just have a moment for everybody that goes through that. They just voted on that a few minutes ago in the General Assembly. Thank you. Carol, you want to move that up?
I'll make a motion for the consent agenda.
Oh, here you are. Hi. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Barrett?
Unified basketball at the high school, these are volunteer positions. John McKinnon and David Landauk, boys tennis coach, John Pelletier. Unified basketball middle school, again a volunteer position, Brandon Chase. And teacher assistant, which is an existing position in our budget, Donovan Macumber.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for those people volunteering for the Unified. It's a wonderful program.
I'd like to make a motion to move up items 60 and 60.
Second?
All those in favor? Okay, 60, Spotlight on Success. High school first, please.
Adam Tracy from the high school is here to talk about the giant man in the back, behind Mrs. Black.
Good afternoon. We were asked to come and kind of talk about a project that we did about a month back. I'm Adam Tracy, Zach Fenster, Cole, Mikey, Skylah, and Livia, and we're here to -- there was a few other of us that worked on it as well, but they couldn't make it tonight. We were basically just asked to talk about a project. So sometime in February, Linda Larson had gone to the Newport County Education Summit and made a connection with a woman from Ballard Park. They have a thing for their winter fest called Illumination Gardens. Basically, it's one of their public parks that artists can go and bring different lit-up pieces of artwork to. And there's tons of different things. You basically submit an idea, and if you're accepted, you can put it in their display. So we came up with an idea and submitted it. Basically, I have a group of kids that I meet with on Tuesdays. We stay after school, and we just kind of do a bunch of different cool projects. So I thought this is a good project for this crew. So we met, and they'll kind of explain a bit more about it. So, Mikey?
Well, we wanted something that everyone could connect to, being in the area. So Cohog Man, we came up with. Also, what's his other name?
Manny Sylvia.
There was a whole story that went along. Yeah, there's a whole comic book strip and everything story on it. His name's Manny Sylvia. And it was featured on the Harold, Buffalo River Herald News, the Newport Daily News, and on Channel 10 Nightly News.
We all kind of got together and painted him, the guy over there, and the sign too. So, who of us got together and painted him?
And then while they were painting, a few of us got together in the woodshop, and we planned out how we would set it up so it could stand in the garden.
The other cool thing we did when we worked on it, we did this all in one afternoon, is that before we started, we went into the cooking room on the side of me, and we actually put on a clam boil, because we needed some shells for his bag. So we brought all the stuff in, and while we were working, we worked for like an hour and a half to about an hour. And then we all chowed down afterwards and kind of talked about what we did. It was really great.
Delicious.
Yeah, it was great. And then it made its way to Ballard Park. It was set up, and before the Ballard Park had even opened, it got a ton of press. Like Mikey said, it was on the front pages of two of the local papers on Saturday. It was on the Channel 10 Nightly News, also on their website. Skylah, if you want to talk more for these things.
Everyone literally loved Cohog Man, because it's so like relatable to where we live. And I can't believe how much like pressing on Twitter, it was seen by 1,500 people. It got like 750 shares on Twitter, a ton of likes and favorites. It was just really popular.
Yeah. So that's basically what we were asked to talk about. And that was the project. It was a ton of fun. And then I just said, "Well, we have a second, and we'll make this very quick." With the same group that we've been meeting with, and there's a few more of us that have been meeting, we did a bunch of other really cool projects over the last five months. So we just figured we'd give you a look at them quickly. We designed and painted the sign for the middle school. We designed, painted, and made a sign for the technology and engineering department for the boat show. We painted a few signs for the local driving school on Fish Road. We have an art display, traveling art display, that kind of goes around the high school and kind of fills in some of the hallways. And then recently, we just put up a history mural in the history department. And yeah, and that's it. But, and actually, with all these things, with all these things, we just wanted to actually thank you guys, because we know that we have a ton of support from everybody for these opportunities, and you guys find the funding for us to do it. And really, we think it's great that the middle school says, "Sure, you guys can paint it and put it up." And we think it's awesome that the administration at the high school says, "Yeah, we have enough, you know, we support you guys to put up a mural in the history department." And we really appreciate that.
And I have to thank you guys, because when we went down to Ballard Park, it was so beautiful, all the lights, and it was a beautiful night. And right next to Cohog Man, there was a beautiful Eiffel Tower. And all the families were coming up, and the mothers were saying, "Oh, come on, honey, let's have your picture taken in front of Eiffel Tower." And the fathers were going, "Are you kidding me? Look at Cohog Man." So we were here in Newport, and thank you. And he's also making his debut at the town hall. He'll be there Sunday for the new artists that are showing their work. And they're going to take him over tomorrow, and then he'll be there for Sunday for the reception. Cohog Man's going to be there. So they said, "Can we have him for the month?" I said, "Absolutely not. His book's solid. He has an agent and everything." So keep him safe for the month. So really, we appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Barrett, the middle school?
I'll turn it over to Mrs. Mitchell.
This is a great segue. Mrs. Marshall and I are teaming, Mrs. Marshall here, to come up with some really good snacks for Art and Tech Ed, for all that you've done for us.
We heard, yeah. We'll wait.
They'll be helping. And they are on the middle school. March is Youth Art Month, and once again, our Tiverton Middle School artists are participating in Newport Gallery Night. We have 10 of our artists' works that will be on display at the Newport Art Museum, Coleman Center for Creative Studies, in the Gilbert S. Pond Building. And we have invitations that we sent to the parents that we also want to give to all of you. Our students who work have been chosen for this wonderful, wonderful, month-long celebration of art in schools. We have Mackenzie Kyler, grade 5; Bella Schneider, grade 6; Dana Williams, grade 7; Amy DeRome, from Lane, grade 7; Tyler Shulby, grade 8; Hope Shugan, from Brickshaw, grade 7; Ashley Taylor, grade 6; Jameson Peckin, grade 5; and Breonna Agnew, grade 5. We also had our Pageant Wax Museum a few weeks ago, our second annual, and our founding fathers and mothers who represented there. And so Mrs. Costa wanted to be here. She is a mother of four, and so she not only is a great math and social studies teacher and organizer of our Pageant Wax Museum, she is a festival mom. So she's going to join us in about 10 or 20 minutes after her son's playoff game, and she made three brothers, five brothers, five sisters.
Oh, good. That would be nice.
And they made big costumes.
That's good. It was, it was amazing. Thank you. Thank you. Elementary, Mr. Barrett?
I believe, Mr. Cabral, do you have anything for us?
On the elementary level, we wanted to recognize the educators of the year. The Tiverton Lions Club is hosting a Tiverton Community Recognition Night. It's going to be held on March 28th at White's of Westport. There are three educators selected, one for each level. At the high school is William Phillips. At the middle school is Christine Costa. And at the elementary, representing all the elementary schools, was Susan Patrot. We just wanted to congratulate, number one, thank the Lions Club for offering such an opportunity, and thank the Lions Club for honoring our teachers. There are also tickets available. I passed out a flyer. Tickets available at Ranger, if anyone's just interested in attending the March 28th ceremony.
Thank you.
Also, Mrs. Wardell has some new information that just came in. So is that, you want to?
I just received a phone call today that our art school was nominated by the Rhode Island Department of Education as a National Blue Ribbon School. And we were one of three schools in the state of Rhode Island that been nominated. And we are going to apply as an exemplary high-performance school. So I'd like your permission to complete all of the application.
Please do.
Thank you.
Yes, of course. Thank you so much. That's wonderful. Okay. The next one?
Yes, Dee, I've been talking to my administrators for a while, and we've talked about, we've been talking about technology, and how we use it, and moving forward as a district, what role it will play with us. So this next item is in two parts. The first, Ms. Santa asked Diane to develop a relatively brief PowerPoint as far as how digital learning and Common Core and PARC kind of come together. And then after that, we have teachers from every school. We'll give very brief demonstrations of things, how to use smartboards, document cameras, and so on, things that we're actually doing currently in the school. So I think it kind of goes also along with Spotlight on Success. So I'll ask Diane to start with her part of the presentation.
Thank you. We're just going to share some information on what the technology skills expectations are for students, not only for Common Core, for the PARC assessment, but also for 21st century learning, and for their careers in college, or going into the workplace. And then at the inclusion, as Mr. Barrett said, we have some teachers who will be presenting. And I want to thank the teachers for being here and for really taking the lead in technologing their buildings. So I'll start by just reviewing the components of PARC. We know that there are two portions of the assessment. One will be given in March, and that's the performance-based assessment, and that's more constructive response type of questions. And then at the end of the year, the assessment is more like a multiple-choice type of test. And both components will be taken online when the assessment is up and running. There are different types of test items for the online testing. For the reading assessment, students will be asked to summarize and synthesize information from several sources, including online reading, video clips, charts, and graphs. And the math assessment will include an online calculator for grades 6 through 12, and an online graphing and geometry tool, as well, that they'll be required to use. And this is a listing of the types of skills that students will need to be able to do, and they are embedded within the Common Core standards. They are also represented in the National Technology Students for Standards for Students, and necessary within many career fields. And at the district level, the administrators and the teachers as well, we've all been discussing how we will teach all of these skills, how will we embed them into our curriculum, at what grades will they be taught, and then how will they be supported across content areas. This is an example of one of the test item samples. In this reading item, students will select, drag, and drop the stages of the life cycle of a butterfly in correct sequence. And this question goes along with an informational article they would read, and then demonstrate the comprehension by being able to put things in the correct sequence. In this item, students read a passage and then answer the question in Part A. They then have to show two sentences that support their answer, and drag and drop them into the blue boxes. And this question really reflects the emphasis within Common Core for students being able to cite evidence to justify their answers. In this question, students will solve a math word problem, and then explain how they got their answer by writing inside of a text box using words, numbers, and math symbols. Here's another example from grade 7. And to answer this math problem, students will have to drag and drop the object names in order from greatest to least speed. And then in grade 10, students will be asked to manipulate an online graph using the green arrows that are shown there to be able to find their answer. So lots of different tools and techniques that they'll be asked to use. The online assessment also offers many technology-based supports that are not available through a paper and pencil test, and those have some of them listed there. The assessment also offers features that are available to all students, such as a highlighter tool, having words or directions read aloud, a spell checker, a glossary, as well as cutting and pasting tools to edit the writing. Beyond that, there are also some features that are available just for students with IEPs, Individual Education Plans, or 504 Plans. So when we think about digital learning in general, there are examples of technology within every subject area. So in the area of English Language Arts, again, it's within the Common Core standards, it's within any online reading that students will be doing in their future. And it's more than just keyboarding. Students are both consumers and producers of information within their English Language And also accessing a variety of resources. And the digital tools really allow for more engaging and interactive methods of teaching. When we think about digital learning and math and science, there are a lot of online activities, problem-solving, online collaboration that students will be engaged with. And there's some, a few other examples. And all of this also connects with the term STEM and STEAM that we've been hearing a lot about lately. And STEAM is science, technology, including both industrial and informational, engineering, arts, and mathematics. And it's the integration of those subject areas. It's not teaching them in isolation, it's the integration. And within each content area as well, they have their own set of specific standards that have technology referenced. So when we think about technology learning, it's not just in a separate class, it's embedded So we have a long journey ahead of us to be able to provide our students with these experiences. I put together this slide as sort of getting from here to there, in thinking about what we would need to provide these opportunities for our students. And professional development is really at the top of the list. And as you'll see in a minute, we have many teachers that are ready to move forward, not just for the sake of testing, but to better engage students in the learning that's relevant to the 21st century and to the skills that they'll need for their future. There are a lot of resources that we need to be able to get there, to update our equipment and our teaching. And the technology that we do have today is being used, but there's not enough of it to go around. So teachers have not had the opportunity to really embed it into their instruction, and to make sure that every student has access to technology learning. So I'm happy to introduce some of the teachers, and they can share some of the tools that they've been using. I know that Mrs. Mitchell has an example.
Can we just, I'm sorry, could we just go right down the line? High school, middle school?
Okay. So Eric and Stacy, would you like to start?
Evening, everyone. Mrs. Mark, from the high school. Class of 85. Nice to see you. Back when I first started my journey here at Tiverton High School, in the early 80s, the technology of the day was the mimeograph and the film strip. We have come a long way, I think, but there's still room for growth. Just in the social studies department, quickly, obviously, the main way we incorporate technology is through research, and we use the labs here quite frequently to do that. Other things, moving from film strips to streaming video is certainly a great addition as well. We can use small clips to build interest at the beginning. We can quarter the classes. We know what attention spans are with all people, not alone, students. So we can get their attention from current things, not film strips or old videos. So that's helpful. Beyond that, in certain classrooms, we incorporate video projects. I know one's wrapping up about the roaring 20s. They're doing a newscast, which I don't believe they have the technology to do such in the roaring 20s, but we bend the rules sometimes. One of the more exciting things lately, we've been dabbling in the iPad. We have a couple floating on the building. Thanks to Linda and the parent groups, we've got a couple. I'm trying to incorporate currently my SLO with writing, and we're using something called an AppSmash, which was a conference that Diane sent me earlier in the year. But a lot of the tutorials were online, so I've just been messing around with that. And this isn't much of a thing to show, but I'll do it quickly. But my goal is to use video layering, to use green screen, apps that movies use, iMovie, and avatar-type things. This is me as an avatar. Leave it or not. You know, so it'll be fun, and we'll put it in the kids' hands, because they've already shown me a lot of things that I got stuck on. And it's always a way with technology. Anyway, that's Faith's classroom. I walked in one day, and she wasn't in there, and I caught myself in front of her. It talks, it's my voice, and the camp's other little author, but there's a lot of fun about it. The kids are leading the way, and we're starting to get it in our hands, and it makes a big difference.
Eric, can the committee just take a look at your avatar there?
Sure.
It's very lifelike.
It's not my voice, Eric. But the goal will be to do a writing lesson, to show that, you know, we've got our base scores for their writing. Introduce some new articles after seeing this kind of video. And obviously, we're hoping that they'll raise, which I can tell you.
So ideally, we'd like to have class sets of tablets so that students...
You know, I think ideally, that makes sense in a lot of ways. Definitely. I have people on my staff that are very concerned with this, and others that I think are a little hesitant. But if I think if it was everywhere, it would permeate the school.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
That one I passed around is from an app last year. It's just a comic book thing, but we did a field trip locally about the environment. And we took pictures on the iPad, and then kids wrote a script about the day and put in balloons, and it's fun.
Yeah.
It's simple, but I think it means...
It's nice. Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Stacy Elkins, our science department chair, is going to speak next.
Let's play the gloves and the head here, I promise. So I was asked to talk a little bit about how we use science, excuse me, technology in the science classroom. So I don't want to steal the fun, but I know we changed order a little bit. We use LCD for technology, and we do that one smartboard in science. So we use those for daily PowerPoint presentations, adding in video clips. Instead of actually having to buy videos now, we can find a lot of them on YouTube or free streaming on Netflix, or break through time to time. Online interactive labs, something called Brown Arise, which I know you guys have been exposed to before, that we're in a partnership with, so I'll speak on that. Our physics lab equipment, and also, I will briefly talk about the document camera briefly, so I won't steal your thunder. As far as the online interactive labs, when you're talking about physical science, you talk about chemistry, and when you talk about molecules bouncing off one another, they're very abstract concepts, and they're difficult for students to understand. So there are a couple different online labs that we use, just to help students visualize and conceptualize what we're doing. We currently do them in the computer labs around the building. Just for some quick ideas on what I mean by that, for physical science, we currently use an earthquake triangulation online lab, so they can actually take real-time data about earthquakes. They can use that to not only triangulate or figure out exactly where the epicenter was, but they can also measure the different P and S waves. They learn about different waves in physical science, the timing it takes for them to reach there, so they can also graphically read that and interpret that information. RII tests was an initiative a couple years ago that four science teachers took part in. Basically, it's called the molecular workbench, that we work to help create and then also to improve upon. It allows us to take a look at molecules as they're moving on molecular level, excuse me. For instance, this one right here allows students to manipulate both oxygen and carbon dioxide to illustrate the principles of osmosis and diffusion, and then also apply that idea to red blood cells and the circulatory system. Brown Arise, we're in a partnership, it's a PD opportunity that both myself and Jason Douglas is doing right now. Basically, we can loan out certain equipments from Brown, so we can actually get laptops here that we can use that already have the software on it. And there's also some equipment that you can see here that allows us to measure EEG brain activity. So for instance, Jason ran this last year, where he actually had his students attach the electrodes, so they could actually see the electrical brainwaves. Something I hope to take part in this year is the EKG, so they can hook it up and monitor their heart rate activity, they can take a look at breathing rate, and then also some other muscle and nerve physiology. Two last things I wanted to mention. We have a physics lab upstairs with Mr. Bernardo, Mr. Rick Bernardo. We currently have seven Apple computers up there. They're maybe about 15 years old, but they're still kicking. But what we have for those is something called Vernier software, and it's the same software that's used in a college setting, so the same labs that they're doing in either prep for honors physics, they're also doing on a college level. So 80% of their class labs, basically what that equipment, that equipment allows them to do is they can run real motion labs, so there they have a cart that runs on that track. They can measure the time, the speed, acceleration, and what they can pull up is graphically actually analyze all of that data on the computer screen. So they're already doing that technology integration in the classroom. And last but not least, document cameras, you can use them obviously to display what you're doing, the student work, but you can also do it for 3D items, such as what I'll be doing next week with my anatomy students. See if I can do this correctly. So for instance, my anatomy students are going to be dissecting brains next week. Now, when you're working with a class of 24, it's really hard to illustrate some of the more minute things. So what I like to do for my kids is use a document camera, which we do have one in science, to actually go through one by one all the pieces. And when you get to the inside, which I've already caught for you, I can kind of work whole group and explain where everything of these, excuse me, where everything is. So for instance, some of these more minute details, I can point out on a whole class setting. And what we'll do is, because they get very nervous about their lab practicals, which is the same exact thing in a college setting, is we'll actually record this and put it available online for them, so they can review and prepare for their tests. That's about it in science.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I apologize for the smell, if it starts to seep out. I thought about that, that's why we have the Ziploc.
Thank you.
Yeah, Judy, there's a very nice Judy's right there.
Judy, would you like to come up next?
Sure, I can just change screens. Get rid of my brain.
My name is Judy Moore, and I'm a business teacher here at the high school. My purpose tonight is, my presentation is going to be on using the smartboard, and mainly the smartboard notebook, which are the tools that, no matter what grade level the teacher is, all the tools work the same. And you'll see the presentation I'm going to run tonight can be implemented for whatever grade or curriculum area this teacher wishes. The purpose, however, for my first slide here is twofold. First of all, if those of you that know that Sheila Kaufman and I are co-advisors in Tiverton's Future Business Leaders of America, well, last week, we brought seven students over to Johnson and Wales University for a competition. And last night, we went to the awards banquet, and our results are, we have seven students that placed in the top in their competitions, out of over 280 students competing throughout the state of Rhode Island. Secondly, the competitions, as they were, the majority of them, and there were over 60 of them, had a technology component to them. So either they were working on web design, computer problem solving, desktop publishing, there were lots and lots of competitions, all involving technology. And even those that didn't involve technology, like accounting or business math, all students competed on a computer. So technology's everywhere, they all need it. So I'm going to move on and show you some of the tools that I use with a smartboard in my room. I'm not going to go through every page of you, because I designed a lot of these for an upcoming professional development session. So one of the tools that I think is very, very important that all teachers can and should use is a recording tool. This tool... This tool allows me to, once I click on the recording button, I get a recorder up on the corner of my screen. And the second I hit the start button, you'll see in a second, the time is going to start going down. So everything I write on the smartboard, if I had a microphone to make it really effective, will, my voice will be recorded. Any move I make on the smartboard, I grab a pen tool. So anything I write, anything I circle, I can write correct answers. Everything will be recorded, okay? If I want to pause it because I need to work with a student, I can pause the recording so it just doesn't go on and, you know, somebody's watching something for nothing. Work with the student and then go back and continue recording. So think of the possibilities of this. First of all, I can record a lesson and post it on my website. And then if a student is absent, you can refer the students to go ahead and watch the recording of the lesson. Or in a more current educational setting, the flipped classroom model, I could record a lesson by myself even in my room. So I can go through my notes and back up and re-record things that I wasn't real proficient on. Send the students home to look at the lesson as their homework. And then the next day, come in and instead of me developing the same, delivering the same lesson six times throughout the day, now we just get to work on implementing the lesson. Another great tool are the pen tools on a smartboard. Again, these can be used in any class that you can think of. But we have a pen, I love it, it's called a magic pen. So when I go to my pen selection, I can go down to magic pen. Has everybody seen this picture before? Right, remember our psychology classes, right? Do you see two people? So if I want to focus my kids or anybody on a specific part, I can simply, if I say, let's look at this lady's eye. And if I draw a circle, okay, I get a zoom tool. It's actually a telescope. So I can move it around and say, well, look at this part of the picture. Now come over and let's look at the other eye of the young lady. Or move it wherever you wish. Another feature though of that tool that's really nice, if you draw a rectangle tool around an item, that just acts as a zoom and then you can zoom it around the picture or whatever. You could be looking at a map wherever you want. Tables, we all work with tables. This, and this is done more for an elementary level, but think of applying this to, you can apply it to math, science, history, or whatever. So you can, once you create a table, which is very simple, you just click and drag a table. If I said to a student, okay, what is a fruit and what's a vegetable? They can grab it and drag it up. Selection tool, you've got to remember to go back to the selection tool. You can click and drag and whatever square you want it to settle in, it'll actually shrink and fit into that, into that cell. So this is fun. Lot more interactive, I find that even high school students don't want to sit still and just listen. They want to get up and touch and move things around. This is one of my favorites. It's a screen shade. You can have this set up so when students come into a room, you can have the essential question up on the top of your board or have answers down below. Once they think about their answers, you can simply grab the screen, the shade, and move it down. You can also set up shell, cell shades, which works simply the same way. And you can say, what number comes next in the sequence, okay? And just tap those through or cover them back up. And this one here, we only have a couple more to go here. This is called rub and reveal. Again, it's about getting the kids, I think, really involved, getting them interactive with the projects. So here we have a map. What I had done previously to set this up, I actually have an answer hidden below here. So a student can come up and I would say, what state is this? And if they write on it, if they say New York, then we can say, okay, let's take the eraser tool and see how you did. Got the eraser and it reveals the correct answer. Again, getting, getting people interactive with the board. Object animation. I could put this out there, say, which of the following chords is not a flat chord? And to make it fun, kids could come up, whoever, point, oh, that's not it. And when they get the right one, it's supposed to spin. Did it at home? It will do it later. Okay. And lastly, and I think this is really great, is the gallery. And this is updated, it's like a live update almost every time or a few times you log on to your computer. You'll see, it'll, it'll be updating the smart notebook. And that's over on the side tabs here. So when you open this gallery, for every content area here, you'll get corresponding either pictures on here. Right now, in this smartboard, we have 5,236 pictures, almost 400 interactive and multimedia tools to work with, notebook file pages and just some like pretty background themes if you wanted to get this background looking really fun. So if, for example, I went on to gallery and if I wanted, if I wanted to do a science lesson and I wanted to do biology, I'm beating off Ms. Elkins, you know, I do the human body. And now down here, I have interactive and multimedia. We have pictures too, let's see what we have. All right, I'm going to add a new page so I have a blank screen to work with. And I don't know if I have a brain station. I have hearts.
I've got hearts upstairs, we can do hearts.
We have hearts? We've got hearts. Structure of the heart?
Beautiful.
So I drag that out. It usually takes a second to, to focus.
While that's getting it focused, what would be great for that in science, and we do have one of these smartboards upstairs, is the fact that in anatomy at least, we actually trace a drop of blood all the way through the heart so they could actually try to sequence it and figure it out themselves, interactive on the smartboard.
Okay, so now here we go. So we have click and reveal, we have drag and drop. I don't, I've never done this lesson, but click and reveal. I don't know how this, how you play this game, but they all...
I'll figure it out.
But they all are, I mean, they have so, so many and I'm not a science person. But there are a lot of really fun activities to work with. Maybe it's that, no.
Judy, do all these come with the, like, how do you get those? Are you purchasing those separate from the...
Smart notebook?
Right.
No. I added, I downloaded this on my home computer a couple of weeks ago. I just went on to smart notebook, downloaded it free so that way I was building. I built this whole present, posted this presentation at home. So I don't, I don't have a smart notebook, so I had to do everything by mouse. I don't have a smartboard.
Okay.
The smartboard, people share lessons and it's one of those, they're free.
They're free.
Thank you for a great question.
It might be expensive, but the...
Right, I know, it's really. So then we have, I know Mr. Mario will probably like this one, maybe not. So he coached basketball, I look at basketball, I want pictures. I know I saw a field. Anyway, I can't find it now, but there is a picture somewhere. You can put up like a whole basketball court, then you could make your plays, do your little X's, have them pass the ball or whatever. But I just can't see, unless it's just not updated on this one. But that is smartboard. And I'm sure there's a ton more you can do with it too, but I think that's a lot.
Thank you, Judy.
And congratulations on that award, those students.
The students awards, they did really great. I was really proud of them.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thanks.
Why don't we have Kirsten and Brian come up? They're also going to be using the smartboard.
I'm Brian Goodwin, I'm a fourth grade special education teacher at Ranger.
I'm Kirsten Blanchett, I'm a fourth grade teacher.
And we're just going to add a little bit to the smartboard. Judy did a great job explaining how it works. This is how we use it in our class on a daily basis. This website here is part of our math curriculum. This website comes with our book. And the, it has the actual lesson inside it. And it also has, some lessons come with a video, an interactive video. So this helps the students get out of their seats. It's not us up there talking the entire time. They get to watch a video that's, they're animated, so for them, it's enjoyable to watch. And they can also get out of their seats and interact with the video. This is part of our...
Judy broke it.
This is a recent video that we use on fractions and if we can...
I mean, I can. It's going to defeat the purpose of...
But again, see, it's, it's an animated video that the students are much engaged in. So they enjoy the voices quite a bit as do we. And as the video moves along, it will pop up with fractions and the students will have to match up equivalent fractions. They can get out of their seats and as they, as they go.
The smartboard function of this is not working.
So they'll, the video will explain to them what it is they would like them to do. And then we can have a student come up and typically drag a fraction to where it will, where it should be.
So they would just pull it, so this one's two fourths and that one's one half. And they can actually come up and pull it. And, you know, I usually alternate kids and they'll just come up, drag it. And then sometimes it'll say done so that they have time to get to the board and to, you know, think about it a little bit and then, and then do what they want to do.
So this is just an example for math. We use it in other subjects as well, spelling, things like that, where the students can come up. It's also helpful so that you're, you can, you don't have to manipulate the computer from your seat. You can be up in front of the class, move the board, not just using dragging things to the students, you know. We can use anything that we need. We can pull up websites from the class, move without sitting at our desks.
We can highlight text, sometimes we do that. And the kids can actually come up and they can highlight things. It's also really good for, in the smart notebook, we can, you know, do a lesson, write notes, show a way to do it, save it. When we do this again tomorrow, I can pull it back up and say, remember when we did this? And we taught, we can go through it again. So it's really good at saving instead of having, you know, to, I know colleagues have taken pictures of things that they've done on the board because you have to erase it to do your next lesson. So it's really good that you can save and, you know, revisit things that you've already done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Hallie Azavito and I teach third grade at Fort Barton. And Beth is our remedial reading teacher. And I've highlighted some things that I do using technology in the classroom, but not everything. Mostly, I can show you using the Elmo, that's how I pretty much start my day. So please click here. Now it's, it's on, but it's not, I don't know. Not my classroom, so I don't know what I'm doing. So I usually start my day with morning work every day, actually, except for Fridays. And one thing I do is a daily review, it's all Common Core aligned. This particular activity the children do as soon as they come into the classroom and that's what they're working on, three different types of sheets. And then when we go over it, I'll put it under the Elmo. What the children love the best about it is they can come up. I call someone randomly, everybody wants to do it, so it works out better with popsicle sticks. And I'll have a student teacher come up and they go over this with the classroom while I'm walking around the room taking notes. So that way I can see where the students are at that moment, how their grading is going, and making sure the work was also completed as well. So that's important. And so this is my language. This is a reading daily review that we do. And then there's an assessment that goes along with this on Friday. And we also do, we, you know, we're aligning with Common Core and sometimes you get things that don't work. So like I, we started to notice these boxes were really small. So I went back to the everyday math boxes. And so they would get a sheet like this and then I just X out the things that don't apply right now to what I'm teaching. And sometimes I fill them in and make some of these bigger. But it's nice and they get to come up and be a student teacher and take turns. That's one way I use the LCD. Another thing is, oh, I should probably go through my paper. So that's morning work. That usually takes about 20 minutes total. Fifteen to 20 minutes of my day to just go over that work. The children are grading, children are also able to play student teacher. And at that time, I'm able to walk around and take copious notes on student learning. So frees me up and they enjoy it a lot, quite a bit. I do almost all my lessons on the Elmo and I love it because I can turn it and face the classroom. Whereas with the old overhead, your back was toward the class and you'd be writing like this. I can turn this any way that I need to. And then I can see all the students and we can talk and I'm looking up and, and working with them. I'll put this under as I go through it. So other ways that I use the technology is I'll use the Elmo for brainstorming, summarizing, creating rubrics that I can keep, again, just like everybody else, copy off if I need to. Or I sit at my computer, I don't have a smartboard, but I sit at the computer, which also faces the classroom. And we brainstorm that way and I type everything and then I can print that off. I use the laptops pretty much every two weeks. I use them for word processing, the students use them, not me. And they've gotten really good at maintaining them, how to carry them. Al had come in and so did Greg in the past and taught our students how to use them, how to treat them correctly. And they're much better at problem solving when there's a problem on the computer than I am. So I don't really do much, except walk around and check, make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. And they work together if something comes up and they need to learn to highlight or whatever with the word processing. So we do research, we're going to be testing on them, so we'll probably practice on them. I've created PowerPoints. Last year I did something that was really interesting that they use at the college level. My daughter, who's in college, told me about it and you could join for free called Prezi's. And it's, it's like a PowerPoint, but it's more interactive. All of my students created Prezi's and then we save them. And they sat at the teacher desk and went through the Prezi presentation for the classroom. And that was a lot of fun and it was a great research project because they had to research and fill in all that information as well. Always during snack time, I let them, let them, they do whether I let them or not, have some quiet time and talk. But then I will put in some short videos usually. One of my favorites is smart songs. They do rap songs too, like right now, one, we just went through for a couple of weeks was the president. So you could come in my room and they would probably be able to do, tell you all the presidents from Washington down to Obama. Do Schoolhouse Rock videos for multiplication. I also use the teacher toolbox that is the interactive with the... I also use the teacher toolbox that is the interactive with the Ready Common Core resource that we're using right now. I don't have the smart board, so I see what you're saying because you have to sit at the desk and they want to interact with it more. But that's okay, they have that opportunity. I go on iXL, we'll do questions, Common Core questions, and learn during snack. And they ask to do this. I don't, I'll say, what do you want to do today? Do you want to do rap or do you want to do the iXL? So we just see what we feel like doing. I go and learn Zillion with any lessons that go along with what I've just taught. They have Common Core lessons online that are really well constructed. So I'll put that in there, very short, shorter than the way I talk. So I think that's good. It kind of is like, I'm not lying to you, this person actually teaches the same way I do. And I think that's important. During science, I love to show the Bill and I Science videos. I always find a song to go with our science lessons. There's a great teacher, 6th grade teacher out there called Mr. Parr. And he has made songs for just about every subject in science. Social studies, we show videos. And during Power Block, I have them go on either RASFOR Kids, which is a reading site. That's during my reading Power Block. So they rotate around and they can go on the RASFOR Kids site. Or they go on a site that I've signed them up called Sumdog, which is a math site. And then sometimes during science, I will do something that looks sort of like college work. It kind of is, actually it is, it's from a college site. And when we're doing conclusions in science, I will ask questions and together reconstruct this final analysis of our science lessons. And so this is one that we just did the other day. They basically write it, they know exactly what I'm looking for. And then I type, I type 80 words per minute, so it's not slow, very quick to do it. And I think we did this in about 20 minutes. And for spelling, I like to use the Elmo to underline the different words that we're focusing on that week, the different word in different colors. And that's what's nice about an Elmo versus the overhead is it's in color. So they can see exactly what's beneath them. And again, I love the laptops. I have, I, a student, for instance, many students, a few students over the years, they're really struggle with their handwriting. And we do a special events journal, so they write in this often. And they can have the choice to either type it on a laptop. Some of them will choose that and some will not. Some like, love to write in cursive and have neat cursive. But I find that the ones that do use the laptops write more and more and more, very, much more quickly than the other ones. And they get quite adept at revising their work and learning spell checks. So I find that I do get better writing. So here's, I'm moving forward as we go. This is a recent, you can see the progression there. And here's one that's very good. I don't think we would have gotten this much if we handwrote this story. But this is a tall tale that was typed in and then we created a body around that. And this one I did last week and Lisa, I sent them home, but Lisa Hill is working on it now. So she had, has the kids typing a story and doing artwork around it. So we're always using the computer and thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And now it's Beth's turn.
How many laptops?
We have two laptop carts and each one has 15 in them. And then I have four student computers and one teacher computer, which sometimes I will put a student on, I have to clear my desk off.
So you have five in there all the time?
Yes.
And you have the carts that you can bring in?
And the carts we bring in. And we keep those upstairs at Fort Barton. We're finding that we're using them upstairs all the time. So it's just easier for us to grab them that way.
All three elementary schools are set up the same way.
Same way?
Yes.
Like five in the room and then the cart?
We're lucky to have the carts up there, getting kind of dated. And I know I'm hearing from some teachers, I don't know if you're running into this too, where the battery life is very short.
Yes. Yeah, they could use some updating. I know that, you know, Al has been really good about maintaining them every summer. So when we come in, they're pretty good right from the beginning. It's just over the year they go.
A lot of use.
Because my students do not store their work on it, which is one thing. That I try to free up as much data as I can. Also now we have the Wi-Fi that's going to kick in. So that's going to be a lot better for us because the Wi-Fi can be tricky in my room. You have to go to certain spots. So if we're researching for the Prezies, we were finding, moving around the room, looking for Wi-Fi, and then you'd have 10 kids in one spot. Now I think this is going to, that'll be a good update that was made.
Important enough that the equipment is five years old.
Yeah.
We're, right, we're not here for that.
No, I just was curious.
Right.
How it works.
Oh, no.
How old it is. That's for a later conversation.
Yeah, exactly. They're still great, we still have a lot of years in them.
I will be very brief. I'm just so happy to have the opportunity to be an advocate for a small group use of technology. I am the reading specialist at Fort Barton. And even though my groups are small, I use technology all the time. In my 3rd and 4th grade groups, I have about eight students. So I don't have enough computers for everybody. And with Common Core and Park, a lot of the big things that they do need to do is a lot of research. And to be able to do that, I need the laptops. Another part of my job, I feel that's huge, is motivation. My kids know they're not the best at reading, they, it's difficult for them, they don't always want to do it. But for things like PowerPoint, I get more incredible work from them. For example, one of the things we did, and this is a work in progress, they are not completed. So this is just a rough draft. It is, we took multiple sources.
Sorry, I shut it down.
Oh, you did, okay.
No, it's on the right, you should be in there.
It'll be two seconds. We did research projects on the President and we used PowerPoint. And they have to use a lot of the tools that Diane was talking about, that they'll have to have backgrounds, they'll have to be able to import pictures. This student chose to do Harry Truman. They had to be able to have different colors, they have to find their facts. So like I said, this is still needs to be edited, but this is more than I probably would have gotten if I had to have them just research and handwrite facts. So that's one example, how I'm using technology. Another example is along with the motivation, they need evidence for everything nowadays. So I love the Elmo because I can have my students, Chris Van Alstberg is a 4th grade unit that they do. And Chris Van Alstberg has a lot of evidence in it. So what they can do is, for example, the stranger, if they need to say why the stranger is Jack Frost, they could simply find their evidence, come up to the Elmo and share it with the class. I feel they have more ownership, it's almost like they're presenting, they get very excited about it. So that's another way I use the Elmo. And last is just with the laptops, not having enough desktops where everybody is just typing. In elementary school, that is a skill in itself that they need to learn. And again, just like Hallie said, I get much better quality. You can kind of tell this, I have them highlight their opinion because everybody loves to share their opinion and I want it to stand out because your opinions really should matter. And then there's evidence from it. So like I said, even in a small group setting, technology is extremely important, not only for the skills they're going to need, but also just for pure motivation to do their best with reading. So, thank you very much. And I would love a smart board in my room.
Thank you.
We can move on if it's... Is that it or? Christine here? To call it in? Oh, okay. Now we're going to do an audio call. Yes, Skype.
Christine Costa is probably on her way, but she has left with us a snapshot of the classroom, her math classroom. And here it is. She uses a document camera, has two many teachers in our building. Learn Zillion. And a listening station in Belkin. Yeah, it's pretty funky. Here, go ahead. With the document camera. She hears new work, identify errors, you can enlarge things. She uses it to write a fact. Different units, measurements. Showing scales.
Is that a real thermometer? Is that real time? Sort of feels like.
Christine, which takes a lot of this as well. This is here. Geometry, you can throw a 3D object, obviously. And remote access is wonderful. It allows accessibility and monitors student work while projection usage occurs. She'll walk around the room, change the image to a black screen to stop the display and focus on the teacher. Picture in picture allows a model work to stay on the display while others compare their work to it. She's also incorporated Learn Zillion, as many of our teachers have. And these are individualized tutorials of math concepts, very quick. And the kids can get in and out and practice as a small lab within their classroom. One day I walked in and saw a bunch of kids sitting around this little Belkin. The Belkin Rockstar connects up to five pairs of headphones or earbuds, the kids bring their own. Students connect their own listening devices to the Belkin, it's high Jenny. And video tutorials of math concepts are played for small groups who rotate in to listen and learn and practice skills. Really cool things, that's a snapshot. Into one day, in the life of a 6th grade teacher. Document camera, online, resources in that funky little Belkin, which really does the trick.
That's it, right?
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep.
Is that it, Diane?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Eric, anything?
No, I think the teachers covered it.
I thought that was wonderful, very good information.
Can we, can I make a motion to move up 6F? Only because I'm not sure how much longer I can stay.
6F? Okay, all those in favor?
Only because this is quick.
6F?
Yeah.
That's a chart of accounts.
Yeah, because we just wanted to set a date.
Oh, all right.
That's all that was.
Okay.
We're not actually going to look at it, we just wanted to set a date for a workshop.
Okay.
So I wanted to see what...
So all those in favor, yes, we voted for that to move it up? Thank you.
I just wanted to see what people were thinking. Because I think we said if we wait until Sept-, if we wait until September, it's going to be too late because then we're already doing the budget. So to really dig into this and really understand what we're spending on a per pupil basis, we really need to have some workshops. So what do people prefer, Saturdays? The Tuesday nights, we're not meeting? Tuesday nights, we're not meeting? I mean, we probably may, start in maybe May?
Yeah, it's something that we, it's really just for our, for us.
Right, it's just for us to start planning for...
To get a better understanding, also really essentially to play the groundwork for the budget for next year.
Right.
Actually personally, Wednesday or Thursday night would be a more likely night for me.
All right, so, why don't we...
Why don't I send out some dates?
Send out some dates.
Yeah, why don't you do Wednesday or Thursday night dates in May?
Starting in mid-May?
Mid-May. Mid-May, after the meeting.
After the vote, after your...
Yeah, okay.
You can come.
Bring some cheeseburgers. Throw out some dates and we'll see.
Yeah, just see what everyone's...
See if we can get a majority at a couple of workshops.
Okay, thank you.
That was it, that's all I wanted.
That's good, thank you. So that's done.
Do you want to do the, does the committee want to do 5B first or 5A? If Deb's on a tight...
Deb, what do you want to do? If you have to leave?
A.
Okay. Mr. Eric?
Yeah, this item, again, we discussed it at great length at our last meeting. And the committee concurred that they won't, it might be a good idea to take some time to think about what everyone was saying regarding the Park field test, which is scheduled to take place this spring. And again, just for folks at home, this doesn't, we weren't talking about the following year.
No.
Park is mandated, we're talking strictly about the field test question, which is, this tentatively scheduled for the spring.
I have one question. What if the parents can opt out, so when we go ahead or go ahead? Let's say we do go ahead with the field test and parents opt out. Are there going to be substitutes hired? They're going to totally stay home? They're going to join another class?
We would, if the committee did approve it, we would, I would meet with the principals and we would come up, you know, with a plan to, so the kids wouldn't miss time. In other words, we just wouldn't let them sit there, you know, read a book or something. They'd be doing work, you know, for the class. They may be combined with another class, depending on the numbers and stuff. But we would try to obviously avoid the cost of hiring substitutes.
But don't we have, like if, even if you have like regular tests and a kid who was out and wasn't prepared to take that test, we would, we have alternate things we do for those kids too. So it's not unlike...
Yeah, we would just do it at a greater, at a bigger, you know, expand that.
Right.
It could be maybe half, I don't even know what the number would be.
Right.
You know, unless we got a real large opt-out number, you know, that might change a little bit. But we wouldn't know until...
We get them?
Until we, you know, if the committee made that decision.
This will be also extremely important and on our part honest to simply explain what this opting out means. It means that your child will be taking this test where it really counts for the first time, for real, without an opportunity to try. And so that's, that's good for a parent. We have to, we have the honesty and integrity, otherwise someone says, well, it's something which, it's not necessary, let's opt out of this.
I went on the Park website and they made it very clear that students, schools that do not participate in the field testing will not be at a disadvantage. And they had, it's part of their frequently asked questions and I've written it down. They assure everyone that Park will provide all schools with practice tests in spring 2014. The practice tests will be similar in content to the field tests and allow all schools to become familiar with administering computer assessments and with the item types, interactive item functionalities, and computer-delivered accessibility features and accommodations that will be on the operational assessments in 2014, 2015. And as we discussed last time, teachers will certainly be preparing all of their students through the use of these practice tests as opposed to the isolated classes, which will get exposure to the field tests. And I think it's also important to let parents know that when students participate in field tests, there is no, they get no feedback. So it's like shooting at a darts at a dartboard in a dark room. You have no idea if you came near it or not, but you just keep throwing. Whereas in the spring, when all students are practicing with their teacher, they will get that feedback. If they don't understand something, it will be clarified for them. If they've taken the wrong approach, that correction will be made. So it will be much more meaningful and helpful with the feedback than it can be when you're shooting in the dark.
Why don't we do two things? Why don't we take a vote on whether we are going to opt out or not opt out? And then let's go on to the second issue of if we're not, how we want to word a letter. So I'm going to make a motion. I do want to say that it does give me great pause when the superintendent recommends something that, and I'm coming to a different conclusion because I do respect his, his opinion and his advice. So I did sort of go through the last two weeks, my thought process, what I, what I was thinking. Unfortunately, I'm still coming to the same conclusion. I think testing, especially standardized testing as a nation, is sort of out of control. And where we have an option to choose, and remember, we're not, it's not being mandated by RIDE, it's not being mandated by the feds, you know, by the feds. We're choosing, we're choosing to give a standardized test to prepare for a standardized test. We're choosing to give a standardized test to prepare for a standardized test. And I know if I was sitting on that side of the table and not on this, I would want somebody to say no. So I'm going to choose to say no, to opt out of these tests and to just let our teachers spend that time teaching. So I'm going to make a motion that the district opt out of the test.
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what we are saying is that we will take kids out of the classroom. We will not do the teaching, but we will prepare them for the tests later, but not right now. And so I understand the notion of, you know, throwing the darts. At least you know what a dart is, how it feels in your hand, and then you have to throw it. And the aiming and aligning things in terms of what kind of questions are going to be asked. This is all about the mechanics of the test. So it's not scary. What does this mean here? Well, drag and drop. We are talking about preparing kids for all the mechanics of the test, so...
Only, only for Barton. Everyone else is taking a paper test.
Yeah, I understand, but at least someone felt it and, and could share it with others, but...
And 10% of the class, not even all the classes.
Sure. About high-stake testing, as this is part of this discussion, we, we have completely different opinions, but high-stake testing allows us to identify the problems in the system. For example, SAT, AP testing is a high-stake testing, am I right? You take it, you either spend a whole year studying the subject and you got one, two, or three, or four, or five. So we have, uh, we have our own evidence about how well we are doing in some subjects. And without the high-stake testing, actually seeing the AP scores, we would, I bet, that some of these teachers who are evaluated teaching these courses got very high evaluations. Because let us assume there's a following scenario here. Someone absolutely is qualified to do this. Someone can do a good job, but someone is going to be lazy and is not going to do it simply because of kids. So now you come and you evaluate the class. What is the teacher going to do? The best performance of his or her life, am I right? So everything is fine. And without this measurement from outside saying 13% of the kids, where other schools it's 80%, and our school is 13%, without this piece of data, we are okay, am I right? We are doing great. It's an example of high-stakes testing. So that's basically a some, a tool which identifies the problems. How we are going to use that data in terms of how we are going to decompose this to find the, the, the cause of, of, of some deficiencies which we have, that's a very complicated issue. But we cannot simply say, "Well, we are not going to measure. We don't want to know this. Don't test me because we might find that there's something wrong. It does not feel good. You are poking me and you are trying to make me feel uncomfortable here because maybe I scored 13 as opposed to 80." So that's all I have to say. Obviously, everyone knows how I'm going to vote because the whole education system is to put people out of their comfort zone, to put them, to expose them to some high standards, which if everyone is going to meet all the standards all the time, they're all great. And the whole system is about making everyone feel good about themselves as opposed to saying, "You know what? It's okay to feel bad," and just try to figure out how to get better. To my knowledge, maybe I, I live in a different world than everyone else, but in, in my opinion, that's how we address anything, as opposed to saying, "We are doing great." So we are on this, in this mode is, let's not, let's not ask questions because we are going to potentially look bad or we will see something we don't want to see, et cetera. That's, um, that's my private opinion and, and view on these issues. And obviously, I will vote along these lines, no matter what anyone says.
Dr. Yip, Rockin', you okay, Diane?
Yeah, I'm good.
So, uh, you know, I remain deeply ambivalent about this. I, I do believe with the high-stakes testing, we're sort of rushing into madness. However, I think that what we need to preserve is a parent's ability to opt in if they in truth feel that this is going to be of some benefit to their child. I do not believe it is going to be a benefit to the child, but if parents believe that it is, then they should still be allowed to do that, recognizing also that parents have the ability to opt out. And along those lines, although my vote, uh, you know, you'll see in a minute, but I probably need to out myself. At home, we have a committee of two, and there's only one voting member, and you're not looking at him. So my own child may be opting out. So I think people should know that as they see me vote.
I, I would just like to add that for many parents, this is not a decision that they're going to have the, either the information or the time to make for themselves. And so your point that, well, this will allow parents a chance to opt in, I think the default is that children will be taking the field test unless their parents have the time and the means to educate themselves about the costs and the benefit. And as I said, I think parents count on the school committee and the rest of the administration to have these kind of discussions and to take the vote for them. And so with that said, I would say if you, as an individual, feel that it's not the best use of your own child's time, you should vote your conscience for other people's children as well.
Maybe I should clarify. I'm not saying that it, that is my opinion. I'm saying that's why I think these are going to play out at home. And I think it's...
That's just full disclosure.
As a public official, I think that people have the right to know that.
That's just, that's full disclosure. That's all it is.
We heard it here first.
Right.
Someone who voted to preserve the field testing, their child opted out.
Okay, so I, too, am ambivalent. Mr. Murray was down back there, and he knows I believe in practice. I believe in rehearsals. But as Mrs. Herman said, this isn't for everyone. If this was for every child in the school system to get used to it, I'd say absolutely. But when I do my research, as you can see, it's constant. And I, I read the New York Times Magazine and it says, "The SAT is hated by stressed-out students, frustrated educators, hamstrung admissions officers, anxious parents, and all of the above." Now, the SAT, the funny thing is, when I went to school and my kids went to school, that was it. You could do whatever you wanted in high school, be on the highest honors, and if you didn't get that certain number, your thing went in the trash. Thank God that doesn't happen anymore. The colleges are finding out that the well-rounded students and the kids that have the day-to-day initiative to study and everything are going to make it. So my mother's college that she graduated from in 1938, Regis College opted out of SATs, salve a lot of the colleges. You don't need that to get in. They look at that, but it's multiple measures that we talk about all the time at Tiven and High School, how it's multiple pathways, multiple measures down on the elementary level. You're not a number. You don't walk around the schools, "I'm a one, I'm a two, I'm a three, and I'm a four." Artie Duncan himself said it. So when I have to make this decision, if it was for every child in the system, it would be absolutely, I want everyone to have the benefit. But what are we saying? We're going to give the benefit to a few? And the rest of them? Oh, no. Talk to me about that. Talk to me about charter schools. Talk to me about fracturing a public school system. That's not what Horace Mann was talking about. It's for every kid that walks through our doors in every school to have every opportunity. So now we're giving some kids an opportunity to learn how to drag, whatever that means. I don't even know what that means, to tell you the truth. But when I look at these things, and I said, "What is that? What are they talking about?" And I'm glad we have teachers here that are going to tell my grandchildren what it's about. But I want them, if they're going to tell Michael, I want him to tell Sam and Ben, too, and all the rest of the kids. So this is even crazier than ever. We're giving some kids the opportunity to excel, and we're giving other students that may be excellent, they won't, you won't even know how smart they are because they won't know what they're doing. So I trust Mr. Rierick, and I trust Diane, Mrs. Sanders, and all you teachers to help all the kids, but I certainly can't support the Department of Education again. When they sat over there the other day and told us that there were actually questions on the kneecap test that these students had never had, because you have to have a full year of Algebra I, a full year of geometry, and a full year of Algebra II to do well on that test. And then we're telling kids, "Oh, don't worry." So I said to someone, "I think we should all know Ancient Greek. We're going to decree that on the school committee because it's the foundation of civilization and democracy. So let's all take that. And you're all going to come because I took it, and you're going to say, 'What is that?'" But don't worry. When you feel, we'll teach, we'll tutor you. And you're going to feel again, we'll tutor you again. You'll show some growth. And what does that mean? It means nothing. So again, this is a flawed system from the Department of Education mandating down to us. I checked with our congressman because David Abbott said, "It's not our law. Check with your congressman." Well, I did. It's a law that you have to have a test, but you don't have to take it over and over again. It's not a high-stakes exit test. You just have to have a test. And we went from "No Child Left Behind," which went from 2001 to 14, and we opted out. And this was a provision. We had to take this test now. That's what, what we said we'd do. So "No Child Left Behind" might have been tough, but it was a good concept. We're leaving a lot of kids behind in this race to the top. So I can't support this. And believe me, I did my homework. I called everyone. I checked with everyone, and I, I just can't support this. So thank you. So, so Mr. Rierick? Do you have anything?
No. Um, I certainly understand everyone's position. I'm, maybe it's my nature, but I'm skeptical. And I know what Carol read off their website. But I'm skeptical that they'll have meaningful practice questions. It is spring, you know, 2014. Not that that impacts anything, because the question is, do you want them to take this particular test? I'm just saying that I'm skeptical that they will have... Because remember, the point of taking the test, supposedly what they told us is to calibrate questions and develop questions. Well, if they're doing that now in the spring of 14, maybe it's just me, but I don't understand how you get practice, how you'll have a practice test in the spring of 2014 when they haven't done to develop the test yet. So again, maybe it's just the way my brain works. But that's the only point I wanted to make. I certainly respect and understand everyone's position, and, you know, we'll execute whatever the committee wants.
Do any of the principals want to say anything about it? Because we value your judgment.
Nope.
No?
We discussed this a lot, administrative council meetings. And when we work out it, we always have Mr. Rierick come to the conclusion of all of us. So, you know, when he's expressing his opinion, he's also expressing the opinion of all the administrators as a team. We just call the vote.
Diane? Diane?
No, I agree with everything that's been said. The, the only other piece or benefit that wouldn't be realized through teachers just doing some of the sample items is the whole process of administration, especially from the online component, us being able to check our own capacity, but other, you know, we will have to find another way to make it ready.
Unfortunately, it's only one school and part of the school. It's not even a whole school.
They gave us software tools to test it.
Yes, Park did have that on their website, too, that they would...
And I think we will do okay one time.
But I think when Diane was talking capacity, she wasn't talking a class. It was take that class, learn what is, what happens there, and then extrapolate out to our entire district. You know, that's, I believe that's what you mean by capacity. It's not, do we have the, you know, software package? It's, can we, if we ever had to go to that, can we do it? And what would be some of the problems?
Someone in the district, a colleague, went through this experience and said, "Listen, that's how it is. That's what happens. That's what this is about. We will not have that experience." So... And these are people who basically are in the trenches, and they are telling us this, this thing that, from what I hear, it might be a good idea that someone is going to try it, but...
As, because we've, and the last thing I'll say is, I think there's a bigger battle ahead.
I agree.
Regarding Park and how it's used for graduation.
I agree.
And I think the committee needs to put this, just make a decision and focus our energies on that. Because that's really where it's going to matter. I mean, I, I think it's important that we've had these conversations. It's important. But the bigger, there's a bigger battle that needs to be waged. We're going to need to work together on...
So your recommendation would be to have it?
My recommendation still would be to experience it.
Okay.
But I certainly understand.
Just again, I guess, to make sure my position is clarified. I, I do not believe in high-stakes tests. And not when it tells us where the errors are, what laws are in the system. And, um, I agree with Mr. Rierick that this is probably not the time to fight the battle. And that this will at least allow us to have some knowledge of the test itself. And, and when we have to talk to them next year, we can say, you know, we did, we did what you told us to do and we disagree with what's going on now, so.
So, so when I hear Mr. Rierick say, he speaks for our principals, I hear Mr. Cabral say the same thing, then I have to defer to my administration.
But I hear very different things from parents and from our teachers last week. So, I mean, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough one.
And it's a hard decision, and we certainly under... Our position...
And I like Sally. If everyone was doing it, I think it would be different, but we're only...
Our dynamic, our job is to provide the committee with as much information as possible. And there are going to, and I've always said, whenever we disagree about educational issues, that's fine. Because we're discussing what's best for kids. And there are times where, you know, the idea doesn't carry. This, I mean, I, again, I just want us, the committee, to vote and move on.
Right, because I, I agree. We have bigger issues.
Well, it's just bigger. And I don't want us to waste important human capital, political capital, on this question. So I would, you know, I have no problem when, if the committee decide, if the vote went not to do it. I don't...
You just want to vote.
We will, we'll execute it. We'll do whatever the committee, we serve the pleasure of the committee. We'll execute.
And that's fine. That's fair.
Okay, all those in favor of...
Opting out.
Opting out. All those against?
So then, um, I'd like to make a motion that we send home the letter that we got from RIDE, but that we modify it to include some language that basically says, "Well, the district is, um, providing the field test, that it is a voluntary test, and that the parents choose to opt out to..."
We'll highlight that.
And that students, parents, students will not receive the scores.
I think it says that in the letter, doesn't it?
But I think, well, we can highlight that they have the right to opt out.
Right.
And that they, do you want them just to contact their principals?
Yes, that would be the easiest way to...
Principals, okay.
And then to provide other...
And that will provide other learning opportunities during that time.
Educational opportunities for those children that opt out.
And then also put the website up and say, you know, "We recommend that you do educate yourself on this question." And, um, I think that's the best we can do, like with any other question. The best we can do is educate the parent.
So highlight that it is voluntary, although we're choosing it to do it, it is voluntary, and you want to highlight that there, we will not, the district or the students will not be getting any information.
Well, the prob, the concerns you have.
Yeah. And, and the number of hours that they, the students can expect to spend preparing for the field test and taking...
So it's really, if you want to know if your child is participating, you're going to need to contact your principal? And then if you want to opt out, you're going to need to contact them? Because not everybody's participating.
Well, we're going to send it just to those affected parents. So it's easy. In other words, you know, the class at Fort Barton, their classroom will get the letter.
And if they don't want to take it?
Because it doesn't pertain to anybody else. It's just for them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I was.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
No, we haven't voted.
We did?
We did. Not to...
What, oh, what's a second motion?
Not a second motion. To send out a letter for...
Oh, okay. All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
We'll get that out next day or so.
Okay, Mr. Rierick, on to something else exciting, the budget.
Yeah, um, the budget, I just gave you a PowerPoint. This hasn't changed since we last, um, I didn't bring it to the screen because nothing's changed in the budget.
What was the expense increase, Doug? Not without, without the increase in revenue, just the flat, because they were, um...
1.9%.
Okay, that's what I thought. Someone asked me, and I said, "I thought without any increase in revenue..."
Right, we're still at, you know, we're at one point. And the, I believe the, the question that, that came up at our last meeting and prior to that when we were doing the budget was the cross-country stipend. I believe that's really the only open question that we have in the budget. Steve?
No, I don't see Kelly LeBeck here, but I did want to...
Bob, are you here for that?
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I did want to...
Before we do that, I, I see somebody in colonial yard.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And I don't, I don't need to cut Bob off, but...
We don't want to keep him. We don't want to keep him.
I see Martha Wilson.
How could I miss that?
I don't know. I just figured.
Sorry. Actually, I'm Mercy Otis Warren.
Okay. I said Martha Wilson.
Is Patriot's going to go to that or is it going to be...
That's right.
I didn't notice you back there. I don't know. I missed you.
We came to talk to you, so I'd like to tell you about Patriot Project that we're doing in our social studies classes at sixth grade, myself along with four of the social studies teachers. We really took our American history unit and really brought it to life. Along with our textbooks, the students walked the Freedom Trail on our field trip in Boston. We also had Revolutionary War reenactors come and visit our school with artifacts. They passed around even our cannonball shells, musket that does not fire, and many other artifacts. We also visited Prescott Farm in Middletown, Rhode Island, to learn the true history of our very own William Barton. And then students studied Patriots who made a difference during the American Revolution. My son studied Sam Adams. His name is Sam also. So he's going to tell you about his role yesterday.
Could you just turn it so they can see the button? Because when I, last year, when I went, I started talking to the students, and they wouldn't talk back. And finally, one of them was kind enough to point to the button. And then I would push the button, and then they would speak. So I just wanted the committee to add...
Sure. The premise is to have a living wax museum. The students present in class to their peers, and then they present to the fifth graders so that way the fifth-grade students know what to expect next year when it's their turn. And then we invited school committee members, family, friends, relatives, and they came down to visit. So visitors would come by and press the button, and then the Patriot would go into character and tell you about the difference that he or she made during the revolution. So.
You're up.
Hello, my name is Samuel Adams, and I'm one of the most important Patriot leaders of the American Revolution. I was the fourth of 12 children. I spent most of my childhood watching boats going in and out from Boston Harbor. My first school was the Boston Latin School, then later on I continued to Harvard College. After I graduated, I met a woman named Elizabeth Checkley. We had six children, but sadly she died giving birth to her last child. After I met and married a woman named Elizabeth Wells. Before the Revolution, I continued my fellow-spiring business. Unfortunately, I ran it so badly it had to close. During the war, I pursued a new just to join the Patriots out. I organized a group of men called Sons of Liberty. We tried to get tax contractors to resign from their jobs. I created a group of men called the Committees of Correspondence. We sent letters to the colonists explaining what was going on within the colonies in Great Britain. I organized the Boston Tea Party. Members of the Sons of Liberty threw 342 justices into Boston Harbor. And lastly, I was one of 56 signers of the Declaration of Independence. I will always be remembered as one of the most important Patriot leaders of the American Revolution. Thank you.
And as a history teacher, it's amazing how detailed and how well the students researched their role, and I take it very seriously.
It was an amazing time.
It really is something to see.
It was a lot of fun.
And again, history gets overlooked now because it's ELA and Mass, so I love this night.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much, and thank you for coming.
The students did have to do their primary source documents and then secondary sources.
They did a great job.
But I'm glad that you mentioned how history is being overlooked because they made the point the other day about the change in the SAT and how they're going to include questions on there related to founding documents. So this is a really good, good time for it to roll back to that.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much for having us.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's like a senior project, six years...
It really is. It's like a senior project for a young middle school.
Just leave the board. Eric could use it in one of his history classes. Do you want a powdered whip up? All right, back to the...
I think our only question was, we had agreed to add the coach stipend, but we needed parent commitment to fundraise for the remaining funds. And Kelly wasn't here tonight, but she did make sure she called me. And I also spoke with a second parent, can't remember who it was, Doreen Phillips, that they are, while they couldn't be here tonight, they are committed to fundraising, just like they do with the middle school, to make sure that they can cover the extra costs beyond the stipend. So that was really our big concern. It wasn't that, you know, we were going to add it. It was just that the parents were going to be committed. And that's a very committed group of parents, and I have no doubt that they'll rise to the challenge.
And I wanted to ask a question because I, listen to this. And it was referenced to the lacrosse, if I'm not mistaken, I wasn't here, so I want to make sure I'm keeping on correct rounds. Lacrosse fundraised for five years before it became a...
Yes.
Okay? The middle school parents have raised money for four years to prove that this program can be sustained. Does it matter at which level that we raise the money to determine that, yes, it is a viable program for us to run? So do we have to go another four years at the high school? Or does it matter where we go? Like, I know that you're going to ask for a grant to be able to run at the, at the elementary level. We're already, we're already running at the middle school level. Next year, we'll have four years' worth of kids have had an opportunity to participate cross-country, which has been funded by parents fundraising at the middle school level. Why can't we add it to the high school and absorb it as a, as a program without having to do that?
The issue, Mr. Murray, is not just athletics. It's district-wide that we have lots of programs that we're not funding, or that are being 100% fundraised, or that have had their fundraising cut, or we're only paying a small stipend.
That's fine.
So it's not fair to say, "Let's fund completely..."
Agreed. Agreed. I'm not buying you that.
"...cross-country a brand-new sport when we're not funding so many other things as a district."
The next question, the next question I wanted to ask, would you allow me, if you give me that coach's salary, to creatively fundraise to make sure that I can take care of this? Because I've already had something offered to me. I'm probably not going to need a whole lot of help to do this. I've already got someone that's offered me a sum of money to be able to cover this if the school department wasn't going to be able to.
We're only covering this.
What's the question?
And that's all I'm interested in.
Is there...
I would just like to be able to, I would just like to be able to run the program. Okay? If you can provide the stipend for the coach...
Oh, you may be able to get funds from the outside?
Allow me to take care of that.
Please do.
We're not used to people saying, "We'll give you..."
I was like, "Oh!"
So that's what it was for.
So as long as I know that it can be so that I can stop the process of informing kids that we're going to begin this thing in the form...
Pending, again, it's all part of the whole package, but, yes, they, that's, it's in the budget. We would take the stipend.
Oh, absolutely.
And if you could do that, obviously.
We don't care who contributes. Exactly.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Thank you.
That's, the budget, again, so nothing changes. We're still at 1.9.
I had a quick question, the roll forward, Doug. I don't know if it's in here, the fund balance roll forward.
Oh, yes. I don't think it's in today's budget.
I don't think we put it in this...
Well, I'll ask it as far as the budget, anyway. When I was looking at the fund balance roll forward, we had the facility study in at 50. Didn't that come in a lot lower than that?
Yes.
Or were you just still, you had estimates in there?
Yeah, until we had a contract signed at that point, I think I was using the original estimate, so that...
Oh, okay, so that hasn't been updated?
Obviously, you stay in the fund balance because we didn't get that.
Yes, it's less, it's, it's about $30,000.
So do we need a motion to send the final budget, or they already have?
Wait a minute, please. First, we have to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Perry. Thank you for coming.
I just want to make sure we've got the right, the right numbers, Doug. General fund, you had 29, 244, 435.
That's correct.
And then under capital, 31, 004.
Correct.
So your total would be 29, 275, 439.
Yes, that's correct.
So all those numbers stated.
Yes. Yeah, the only thing pending is if we were going to change anything this evening with cross-country, we would have altered that, but...
No, so that... That was in the budget, 2504.
Right. What's received from us is still the same.
Still stands.
State funding, are those numbers?
We had our delegate, our State House delegation in a few weeks ago, and they, they said the numbers that we had were still the best numbers to use, and those were provided through RIDE in December. So nothing led us to believe that that's going to change.
So basically, still, they've been, we would be told the whole, you know, that number was, is still valid as of...
Great. I just wanted to thank you for all the hard work that you've all put into this.
Well, thank you for working with us.
As I was telling the new town administrator, I met him, just myself, we had a very fortunate year. You know, everything seemed to come together right. And I wish I could say, well, great deal certainly, it'll be as easy next year, but I don't think it will be. But this year, we were able to thankfully get it to that number, so...
At this time in our lives, we take it one year at a time.
Absolutely. A year from now is late, you know, a long time.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you.
And just in general, I brought all my charts for you to look at for the local funding and the federal funding and shared service and all the things people might be interested in.
Dave, when would you, when is your date for approval? So if there are any, not the meeting in the auditorium, but you usually have a meeting in March where you put numbers...
It's usually the second week in March. We don't, we haven't pinned it down yet.
Isn't that this week?
I'm sorry. Second week in May.
Okay.
I thought I brought the agenda with me, but apparently...
How do we do?
We have one more. This week, we're going through a couple of small departments, and then we start voting for the next four weeks.
Yeah.
So you've got at least the month.
So the second Thursday in May would be the eighth? Is that what you tended to be looking at?
Correct.
Okay.
So is that when you would like us there to, I guess we need to be there when you got, when the vote is?
When you vote on the school budget, will you let us know so we can be there?
Absolutely. We'll let you know.
Okay. That's, that's all I...
Yeah, that'll be in, within the next four weeks.
Okay.
So we already forwarded it to them, so we don't...
Right, no, but I mean, they vote.
No, I know, but do we need anything else?
We need to vote tonight.
No.
We need to vote tonight to send the final budget, because I have to, I want you to add, please put the resource officer first so I can go recuse myself.
Well, we've already, we've already voted on sending the budget. We don't need it.
Yeah, but this is the final vote to send the budget to the vote committee.
Do we need another vote?
I think Mrs. Black wants one.
Okay.
Because I want to go and recuse myself so you can do that.
Alls I do is send a letter to Dave saying, "Here's the number." But the number hasn't changed. It'd be a very brief memo to him.
So let's just do the budget in total. We'll just do that.
Sure, just for informational purposes.
Yeah, just for information.
Our, our full appropriation request is $29,275,439.
Which will be, which will be our number we would ask the budget committee to present.
So I'll make a motion to present a, to approve the final budget for total appropriation of $29,275,439. Carol, you want to call the vote? You're the VP.
All in favor?
Carol, you handle that.
Four in favor. One recused. And I need to go back to work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our next, I don't know, let's pack it. The next, our kneecap scores, no, I'm sorry, Professional Development Day. I put in the packet some information regarding, because we have a professional development committee that teachers volunteer to stay, to serve on, to provide us impact, or feedback, I should say, on what professional development opportunities they'd like us to offer. And you have a document, Diane chairs the committee, Professional Development Advisory Committee. And one of the things, after we had our first session, because we haven't had PD days, as you recall, for a long time due to budgetary constraints, so this year was the first time we started rolling them out. There was, and we, you know, after we had the first day, we did the surveys, as you're aware. But we've also talked to the teachers and to Amy and Chris about how it went. And one of the main messages we got back was, there was a divergent view on the part of teachers as to what PD is, or what it should look like in general terms, not so much specific, which we have for you. So Diane and the, and the committee drafted this document that we think encompasses, serves as a good outline to answer those questions. And it's not something that will never change. I view this document as something that will be ongoing, that the Professional Development Committee and the committee will work together on. But our, our teachers need to understand, you know, kind of give them, you know, what our expectations are during the activities. A lot of our activities are, are meant to engage the teachers, whether it's curriculum development, technology seminars, our PD that we're, we're providing guidance counselors with information regarding Way to Go RI and things of that nature. So I just wanted to put that in there for informational purposes so you could see it. And if you have any questions, we certainly can answer any questions. And then our, our proposal, and again, came out of that committee. And I know we originally, as I talked about, how we maybe, we've talked about maybe 50% of the teachers being involved in the tech, but it came back to me and Diane and the principals, and the principals made it clear that they felt that this was a better, would be a more accurate, more effective menu based on where we are as a district. So it's modified a little bit. We do have on the second page, we do have several departments participating in digital learning pieces. And as, once we get the common core down where we're comfortable with, or in the next year or two, obviously, we'll be doing more PD around the digital learning. But the principals, if you want to hear, it's up to you. I know it's a long meeting. But when you hear from the principals, as I have, and from Diane, as to how much the teachers are actually using the technology, at least I've been, it's come to me that they, they want more techno, they, they want more access to it at the different levels. And I know it's not, tonight's not the night to talk about it, but that's a message that we're hearing, you know, from the folks that are in the field. So I would like the committee to just approve the menu for PD Day on the 21st.
The 21st of this month?
I'm sorry?
21st of this month.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, March 21st.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it, and I would just like to add that I would like to thank, as Bill did, all of the teachers and Diane who sat on the advisory committee and I'm sure spent hours working to ensure that the professional development activities that we offer are meaningful for every teacher. And the fact that we have this chart with so many different activities planned shows me that it, it is highly personalized and so will be relevant and helpful to teachers because I know that one size does not fit all and that often leads to disappointing professional development activities because if it's just one or two, it can't be meaningful for every educator in the building. So thank you for the work.
And that was a lot of hard work. Thank you. Are those in favor? Okay.
And I do want to point out again, it went very smoothly, but also because we're working very closely with Chris and Amy and the union leadership on this. This isn't an us document, it's a we document, you know, everybody worked on. And even though we've all worked on it, there'll be things to tweak, you know, after we run it. You know, there'll be bumps in the road, some people say, boy, why did you guys, you know, what were you thinking? That's all part of the process.
The feedback.
Right, the feedback, good and bad. So thank you for that. Kneecap scores. This year, as you know, is the last year that we'll have kneecap and marks the eighth and final year for students in grades three through eight to take it, and then it's seven years in grade 11. And the reason, you know, and what, again, and I know we had the folks down here before and now we're moving into the, the park, is that the first year, and I think if my memory is fading, I'm sure my principal will correct me, we had a no count year in the first year. It was baseline data.
Kneecap, yeah.
And that, that was, yeah, well, it was a different time, different group of folks. But we did, there was that year to create the baseline.
Well, Mr. Forrest spoke to that as well.
Yeah, so unfortunately, we don't have that luxury this year. This year, I broke it down a little differently because this is really how you see it on the RIDE reports. They take the last two years and then compare you back four years. So, so that's what I did. That's why, you know, in the last couple of years, I had a lot of years. And after a while, it gets noisy, but this is really how the data comes back, is printed out. So what I did was, this is our third grade overall reading, literate 82 and the state 69, a little bit of a dip from last year, but for the most part trending the way you would like it. And then what I did was I took each school, this is a little different from last year. Fort Barton, grade three, had 100% proficient, I've never seen that before.
That's unbelievable.
That's all substance.
That's, that's everything. That's across the board, third grade.
Is there anybody else in the state who's managed them?
Not, I don't, I don't know.
No. Thank you.
That's one of the reasons why I think they were nominated for a Blue Ribbon.
Yeah, that might have something to do with it.
Might have something to do with it.
So this is three and fours?
Yes. These are threes. In other words, no one received a two or a one. And Pecassett's reading was 72. It dipped back to where it was in, in '09, still 3% above the, this is the average. And I'm just going to click through them real quick because you've had a chance to see them. This will also be online for people to read. Third grade Ranger reading, again, above the state average, 77 versus 69. Third grade math, again, this is a composite of all three grades, 77% of our students were proficient or higher, well above the state average. And again, because we're not doing it anymore, this is really just kind of a report out. Third grade math, Pecassett didn't quite get to 100. Have to talk to Mrs. Wardell about that. Only get 96%. 40% differential, let's just, you know, pull up the charts, great. Pecassett, third grade, 10% above the state. Ranger, and do you, you want me to do it again for fourth grade or do you want me to just do the, like, fourth grade reading, fourth grade math? Just want to see the schools.
If you have.
Okay, no, I have them. I got them. Tiverton, fourth grade reading, did, almost hit the 90th percentile, 89%. Again, we'll have to talk to the principal, only 97% in, in reading at Fort Barton. Cassett, 84%. And again, you can see the differentials well above the state average. Fourth grade reading at Ranger, again, high 80s, 86%. Fourth grade math, and again, this is where you start to see the, the drop in the math, you know, from elementary to middle and to high school, which is something we've talked about ad nauseam. Fourth grade math, 81% versus 63 as a district. And again, you can see growth from, you know, four years ago. And again, but you can't compare, you're not really comparing cohorts, so.
Right, with small numbers of students.
Yeah, it's a small number. It's a small batch.
Makes it difficult, more difficult to compare.
Fourth grade math, 86 versus 63%. Pecassett math, 74 versus 63. Ranger, 82 versus 63. Down to the middle school, fifth grade ELA, 83 versus 74. And again, scores don't really drop off that much from the fourth to fifth grade in, in ELA. State pretty consistent in math, this slight drop. Now, this year, we saw a drop in our fifth grade math for the first time in a number of years. Sixth grade ELA, again, 85% did quite well. Sixth grade math, overall, 80% versus 57. Seventh grade ELA, 83, 69. Our math, 77, 59. Again, that's really the ideal trend, right, what you see there, that upward slope, positive Eighth grade ELA, pretty much broke even as far as what the state scored versus our eighth graders scored. Eighth grade math, we're a little bit above the state average. Eleventh grade ELA, our high school students, you know, cracked the 90th percentile, I think that's the first time we've ever done that, so it's.
This is percentage of threes and fours?
This is threes and fours, right, so.
Two and ones.
No, the best way to do it is nine, you know, just subtract it, so 9% were in the twos and ones for the test. So it was significant, you know, we only had six students total who did not receive a two. And they had to subsequently retake it and have, I believe they've all met the second test. Eleventh grade math, we took a dip this year from 39 to 30, was that correct, Steve? 35 to 30?
Actually, it's 37 to 30.
Okay.
Two is partially, I guess.
That gets you across the, that's good enough to get you.
Right.
Through. And eleventh grade writing, we did a serious, again, because we didn't score well last year, Peter and his teachers, along with Steve, made a renewed emphasis on writing and you can see the results there. And this is, I call this the Bagundi cohort because Jan asked us to, to track them as groups. And fourth grade, eighth and ninth, and you can see the various groups, the black and the red don't show, but the black is the writing, which is the last one on the right.
How many of the 11th graders got ones in the math? That's going to be.
We had a total of 45, so back out this 39, Steve? 30.
Yeah, I believe we're working with 39. Right away, we've been trying to work with those kids and 11 of them already have bank scores. We had a lot, we encouraged a lot of juniors to take the ASVAB.
Yep. So they got their job.
Yes. This year's current junior class.
Yeah, yeah.
We're already, because we know where we got to go, so.
We know now, so we can do it.
So we already had the, the bank council encourages certain cohort kids to participate and 11 of them have bank scores, so we're starting the cycle again around 28.
Because these kids are still going to need.
To the kneecap.
Yes, they have to go through, this is the second group. Now, we had six students who, who need, who took the retest for the third time on Monday, last Monday. So hopefully, you know, they, they did well. We have one student who is going to do the acupressure. She was sick that, was sick for the third retest.
And those kids with the bank scores still have to go through.
They're still going to take the October.
But they know that they.
Or they can use their bank score.
Right.
But now it's just the October one?
Yes, and then they'd be done.
So there's one retake and then if you have a bank score, you can play that card.
Yes, and we're going to reach out, as we did before, to parents to say, take the acupressure, you know, we'll do ASVAB again.
Apply to college.
Apply to college, now that we know.
First, apply to college. It's our college of choice.
They have certain ones you can apply to.
Yeah, apply to college, that's right.
Yeah, there's some school up in Canada.
There's one on the border of Canada.
So again, those are the scores. I, I still, I know what the deputy commissioner said about the juniors not having to take it, but we haven't heard anything, seen anything, you know, next year's junior class. This year's sophomores, my daughter's group, I said, why not take it until we see it in writing? She got all excited that, you know, as, as juniors, they don't have to take one set of tests, but I, because.
They're going to be parked, right?
Well, because the park exams, the, the results, we wouldn't get at the earliest until the summer of 15, summer of 15.
I mean, we have to guess.
You know, right now, we get them in February.
That's our next fight. We'll be here.
Hopefully, hopefully, I guess in a way that this, you know, we'll be going to a new, again, the park, but we may be coming back to one more round on 11th graders.
Again, if you look at math, obviously, if you look at this data, when you track a cohort, that means how the students progress in, in advancing their knowledge on particular subjects. So basically, from what fifth grade to 11th grade, we have a drop of, what, more than 50%.
Right.
So is this a problem? It certainly has a serious problem. How are these kids going to compete in engineering and science fields with everyone else in the world, including in the United States? And that's what, what happens is we are importing more and more people.
There are serious questions about the difficulty of the math kneecap, especially as compared to the ELA. So, you know, if you have a standardized test and you decide what your cut score is for the ELA, it's just, it's clear that it's much easier to get a passing score in, in the ELA than it is on the 11th grade math. And the 11th grade math is considerably harder than the, you know, the grade five and the grade eight. And it's not just us. It's the entire state.
Not just Rhode Island.
And it's not just Rhode Island. And so that, you know, this looks, I mean, obviously, we can all do better in math.
Of course, yeah.
But in my mind, there's a question about the validity of that test and, you know, was it measuring what our kids were actually being taught? Was it a good test?
I think the point is, it does show, just not for us, you're right, absolutely, statewide there's a drop. This year, we had a bigger drop, we had a, a drop. One of the reasons is, how many days were the teachers out, Steve? I mean, how many days were the math teachers out?
We had three teachers on the, on the writing team in this 15 days last year, and a lot of that was math and geometry. And that was one of the areas that, if you look at my report, there was a drop in that subtopic area. Conversely, we tried to, we, well, we were integrated common core curriculum this year. We had a heavy emphasis on probability and statistics, and we went up 7% in that sub.
And we also spend, one of those, you come, sorry.
It's still not the kind of scores that we want to get, but we would certainly have to do a true, true commitment to reallocating resources in every possible imaginable way to, to make it a competition, to make it a kneecap competition. And we've already, we had meetings, we had meetings on what we have to do to stave off some of the things that we had to deal with last year, so.
And the one.
We have, we have one more cohort that's got to go through the kneecap and we have to deal with that.
Right. When you look at the UCOA, one of the, and I think you brought it up, Carol, is that we spend less per, per pupil than a lot of districts. So obviously, that's a question we have to have, or a conversation we need to have, is we need, you know, resources, you know, how, how do we add to that number and make sure it's effective, just not to say we're going to spend.
Right, of course.
But come up with a plan. You know, some of the data is reflected, you know, we have that. In other words, we're not spending as much as our, our brothers and sisters that are suburban, and that could be a reason why our scores at the math level aren't increasing. And this year, they U-turned, which was something that was perplexing to us, but we weren't, we're not, we're not growing as fast as our other dis, our, our suburbans, but you still have that differential, you still have that cliff. But other districts, we're, we're making some strides, we weren't making as big a strides. And I think that's what we're looking at and trying to, and we may have to dedicate more resources in the end.
To that.
To that, to that, to that area. But it is something, and I, it is something that we can't just, and I agree, I don't think the test is valid and I could go up and down, but we do see it. You know, our NAEP scores are okay, but, you know, we weren't growing. And if it's an unfair test, I understand that, but other districts are making greater progress.
Better progress.
So we can do better.
Yes.
And I think that's.
This argument I heard from a lot of my students, including probably starts in first grade, this is unfair test because they score below. Everyone has the same test, correct? Are we?
Yeah, well, that's what I was saying.
Are students worse or better?
Well, it's, assuming, take the premise that it's a faulty test and it doesn't, it's not meant to measure student knowledge, it's meant to adjust curriculum. It's not as if I, if I'm a math teacher, I create my own algebra test and then assess my students to, to, to get it right. They put test questions on the kneecap that are wrong questions, the kids get wrong. They don't put the questions on that the kids get right when they take, when they take it and they do an analysis. A lot of the test is, they put the harder questions that they struggle with on the test.
Right, the way it was designed.
The way it's designed. Most teachers don't, that I'm aware of, you know, purposely go out of their way to say, I'm going to give them the questions they can't answer. Well, then, what's the point of the instruction if that's going to be your assessment? Nothing. So that's when I say faulty, that's what I'm talking about. But other districts have made progress.
Right, so.
So we, you know, in spite of that.
Right.
So we have to work on that.
So that's evidence that we've got to do a better job.
Right.
I don't think anybody in our school uses the word, this is an unfair test. I'll be straightforward with that. It's what everybody takes. We were making some growth over the last three years, but we still recognize we weren't making the kind of growth that we needed to. We did a school-wide SLO for numeracy, where every teacher in the building made a commitment to teaching kids math in the aspect of their curriculum area. All the math teachers did an additional SLO on teaching fractions. Fractions and multiplication tables are not what they should be. Maybe I need to make some drastic recommendations. Maybe calculators shouldn't be allowed after eighth grade at the high school level. Maybe I need to put two math teachers in every classroom. Maybe we need to mandate summer programs for eighth graders to get a one before they come up to the high school. Maybe I need to mandate that summer school programs aren't counted for Algebra I and Geometry unless they're a standard-based summer school program only. We can take hard steps, but we're going to have to reallocate or add some resources. And then we'll do what we need to do to be in this competition.
Thank you.
Say, have it.
Okay. That's it?
Yes, that's.
Okay.
That's the point. It's a problem.
February, yep.
Here's a solution.
Yep.
We have to, we have to ask the committee, we have to look at this and say, well, if, if these are professionals who are in the trenches, they, we identify the problem, we try to break it to find the causes of this problem and how we can allocate, what kind of changes we can make and what kind of resources it's going to take to address this problem. And then through continuous process improvement, we monitor what is the impact of these changes, monitoring the cohorts and trying to make the changes. All you're going to do is a high-stake testing. You know what I mean? It's, and it's not to harm anyone, but to look at these mega problems, because these are mega problems. And part of this, part of this, actually, and I understand what Carol is saying, because obviously, one, once you move on in math, the problems become of a different nature because this is trying to solve the problem and follow a particular type of algorithmic thinking as opposed to just following particular prescriptive way of, of adding numbers, multiplying numbers, et cetera, et cetera, it's much more complex. So the whole curriculum, which is kind of a cookbook approach, which the same thing happened in a college level, is not suitable to teach a problem-solving skill. So now we have the shift in core, which is based on problem solving, developing problem-solving skills. And these type of skills are basically universal. So you learn it in math, it's going to apply in real life, it's going to apply in science and, and in any other field. And then having the tests, which is part, and I assume, obviously, this is not perfectly aligned, but it's going to align with common core standards, so you are going to test what you are going to teach. And it's going to take time to synchronize these things, but at least we are working with the right paradigm. And everyone is complaining that people who come and try to apply for jobs, they don't have basic problem-solving skills. They cannot make connections. They might know facts, but nothing else. And that's where the problem is, and that's a problem which supposedly we are trying to address to turn things around.
Okay. Thank you. You're going to reschedule the February?
Yeah, this is just FYI. Again, we had a snow day back on the 13th, it seems like years ago.
Two or three.
Stop it, Janie.
Don't, don't change it. We'd like to do it on Thursday, March 20th. We'll just send out, I didn't send anything out until we talk.
Okay.
So we'll send something out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
And our next.
The next one is the mighty mics.
At our next meeting, I'll have the calendar.
Okay.
For next year.
And we have the New York Roadrunners?
Yeah, I'll leave that for Suzette.
Suzette.
I'd like to mention to a class of the New York Roadrunners, Bobby Miles' rant before Barton's rant. The New York Roadrunners run the New York Marathon, and several years ago, they started a program with the New York public schools in which there are a series of different programs in which children learn to run in the New York public schools. Now they've expanded that program as a national program, and the program is a free program. And the program is a free program for all schools, all public schools in the United States. And as part of the grant program, you don't receive a specific monetary amount. What schools receive is free, secure access to a website, in which I would log in and I would keep track of the miles that the children run. And also, teachers and staff members, if they want to participate also, I will get a free Mighty Milers banner for our school. And as people run in their miles, the New York Roadrunners will be sending free T-shirts. They'll be sending some marathon, little, some banners, and some little trophies, and little things, and kids read certain points. And they also have different incentive programs, like for March, they had Miles for Books Awards. So when schools ran fifty miles for the month, through Scholastic Books, they received a thousand dollars' worth of free books. So they have all different incentives every single month that they run. So I would like the commission to apply to this grant. I would like to run this program during recess twice a week, beginning the, well, if the weather cooperates, beginning the last week of March through the first week of June. So it would be for grades one through four. And the great thing about it is it's called Mighty Milers. It's not the Mighty Runners, but so it's an all-inclusive program for all of our students, so everyone can participate. And I'll run it twice a week, and during recess. And I'd like permission to apply.
Okay, yeah, it's fine, right? Great idea. Can you bring, can you make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request to apply for the grant and start the Fort Barton School Mighty Milers program.
Second, can you bring the banner when you get it, we'll see it?
I will, you know, I'll bring some papers and stuff, and if anyone would like to come, I'll need to...
Okay, thank you. That's a great idea, thank you.
Maybe Cohogman could bring it.
We'll book him, Linda's in charge of Cohogman. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, is that it? Okay.
School, we backtracked.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We did, thank you, Lynn.
Five AM, there's two requests, middle school and high school requests that I'd like to approve.
You mean six A?
Six A.
Six A, yeah.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, and Newport County Mentor Program, Linda, could you please tell about the trip to Raytheon quickly? Thank you.
Would you, would you please?
In the summit.
Stay on it near the mic.
In the summit, coming up. Thank you.
We took a group of students out to Raytheon last week, along with Portsmouth, Middletown, the Met, as well as Rogers. We spent the day learning about Raytheon, the company themselves, the engineers, the type of work that they do. The students then got to break up and attend different workshops. So there was a workshop on their cybersecurity unit. They saw Athena and the process of port security, and when they look at all the ships and bridges and everything else that goes around, on around the globe. And they looked at some marine time awareness, as well as a manufacturing lab, where they do the sonar equipment and those kinds of things. So the students had a great time. It was incredibly interactive, and probably the best part, well, for them, was always lunch. They did feed them. They broke them up into groups, four to five students at a table. And there was a Raytheon employee and an engineer that sat with each one of the groups for forty-five minutes or so, and had a dialogue and an interaction with all the students. So they really got to learn kind of about, you know, a day in the life and education, and how they got there, and those kinds of things. One of the great things for us is, two of our students will receive a summer internship for a week at Raytheon, which they're in the process. There was so much interest, all the students that attended, they're applying, and they're going to have to write a little essay as to why they want to be considered. And they'll be spending a week at Raytheon every day with an employee, and they'll be going through their rocketry department, and they'll be building a rocket and using their software and those kinds of things. So it was a great opportunity. As a spinoff, because cybersecurity was such of interest to the students, and it's a great career path, we're working with Dr. Phil Wilf at URI and their cybersecurity unit. So we're going to be doing some, an additional extension with URI on cybersecurity. And I've also talked to someone at the Attorney General's Office and their cybersecurity division. Then they're going to put a little presentation and come out here to the school and talk to our students about cybersecurity, so...
In the summit?
The STEAM Summit Rhode Island, we're planning, it's April third, at the Pell Center at Salvi Regina. It's going to consist of three different branches of education, legislators, as well as business people. And it's really to focus on STEAM, the integration of STEAM, the importance of education and science, technology, engineering arts, and math, and how we all collaborate, and how the students are exposed. One of the big focuses, kind of on the higher level, is we have so many industries out there looking for candidates, that they're not able to fill positions because we don't have skilled or qualified people in the workforce that they're able to place. So we're trying to figure out and look at Massachusetts and kind of what they've done with their STEAM Summit. We're going to be looking at a five-year manufacturing program and certificate program in Massachusetts. So we're going to look at some lessons learned and some successes, and then how we can identify solutions here with our Rhode Island Department of Education, with our legislators, as well as our business leaders, such as the Rhode Island Marine Trades Association or the Manufacturing Association, health and hospitality as well, hospitality tourism, as well as healthcare. And we will continue on roundtable discussions, along with a conference at the end of May at Rhode Island College with the Rhode Island STEM Director. So an ongoing effort to develop a STEAM Summit in Rhode Island, similar to what's happening in Massachusetts.
Okay, one last one, the thing for Friday night? The athlete, the student athletes?
Yes, last Friday night. I thought, I didn't know where it was this Friday night. Last Friday night, the Student-Athlete Leadership Team, that I was here about a month or so ago, that group was selected, and we held Tiger Game Night. And Tiger Game Night was held Friday night. It was seven to nine. It was free, there was food, the gym was open, the, we had to kind of expand and go into the cafeteria in the Commons. The kids played volleyball, basketball, beanbag toss. They had a ping-pong tournament in the Commons area. Mr. McKinnon, as well as Mr. Phillips, were certainly quite the ping-pong champions, or so they thought at the beginning of it all. One of the greatest things that that kind of came out of it is the old game of musical chairs, where we actually played musical chairs around the entire gymnasium. Brought in about ninety chairs or so. And you wouldn't think musical chairs was as competitive as it was, but we, we had a great time doing that. The music was blasting, there was food, all of those kinds of things. We took a group picture, and I've been trying to count, and everybody was moving all over the place. But in the group picture, we probably had about a hundred and thirty-five students that showed up for the evening, just to spend just a healthy, you know, fun, fun evening together, so... And now, everyone wants to know when the next one is, so we're planning.
And at the end, I showed them how to play nineties musical chairs. Put the chair back to back, you know, and then the competition got really rough. Because at my house, they'd be on the floor crying, "It's not fair, you knocked me down." It was...
We did have a student who took the chair and his opponent...
He did.
And raised it up in the air and said, "So he'd take the chair instead of, instead of the spot."
It was really fun.
It was a great time, and Mr. Landock and Mr. Phillips are facilitators for that group, and they're doing some great things, so... And then we had CPR and first aid training for our coaches on Sunday morning, that the Student-Athlete Leadership Team sponsored as well. And they're now called Tiger Pride. So they're coming up with what P-R-I-D-E means to them, so that they're in the process of that.
And tell them who came, who made a guest appearance.
Tiger came out of retirement, old Tiger came out of retirement.
The big one, the giant one came.
So Mrs. Black continues to carry Tiger around, and Tiger was the center of the group picture, so you'll see some posters.
And when Liam saw him come, he said, "Tiger's out?"
With his bandages and his wraps and braces and everything around his neck, so...
Well, you all don't know, but when we played in the Super Bowl, the opposing team stole him, and they ripped his head off, so he had to have surgery, because all this stuff was coming out of him. It was very serious. But now, he's all wrapped up and he's back. He came out of retirement.
I could just say one more thing, but actually, going back to what you were saying before, I think it's absolutely critical, it's a wonderful thing what you guys are doing, to try to connect the students with reality, what's outside. Because kids kind of might see it through what parents do, but we don't talk about the world, but taking them to the real world and showing them why some of these skills they are learning here, and they are told that this is important, why these things matter. Because if they hear it from those people, it is another connection, which will be probably very valuable, is to, for example, expose them to students who are in college or who are in some training programs. And also, "Well, you know what, I was in your place, I hated math, but I wish I would have spent more time studying business, because now I see how important it is." Because we do this a lot, in terms of bringing alumni, which, to these kids, those kids who are already in college, their alumni for their grade. And this gets much louder than what parents or teachers are telling. I think it's a very important thing to do.
I agree. The cybersecurity workshop actually brought in four interns. Not one of the interns ever intended being, or studying computer science, had an interest maybe a little bit. One of the young ladies spoke, and she was in agriculture, and she was going to grow tomatoes for a living. And now, she's studying cybersecurity and has taken a very different career path. And it was after being exposed with her advisor and talking about the different opportunities. So not one of them, until they actually spoke to someone, talked to someone, made it real, did they decide to take that particular career path.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any announcements?
Our guys are all course, are all famous concerts here at the high school. Our students in grades five through twelve are performing together and alone.
Oh, that's nice.
And the Moranite Middle School. And our entire seventh grade cohort group will be going to Raytheon next week, sponsored by the Society of Women in Engineering. PTC is helping to fund the buses and so on and so forth. All of our girls had to write an essay on a famous scientist. And in order to participate, they have all complied beautifully. And then engineers from Raytheon will come to our campus and offer programming for our seventh grade boys, so they don't feel left out.
Oh, of course. That's good, thank you. Anybody else?
Just briefly, Mrs. Black, the committee's in possession of our financial results through February. I'm not anticipating any problems. We're tracking on budget. We're sixty-four percent away through our budget and two-thirds of the way through the year. And next, I'll be happy to answer any questions at any time, as the committee knows. And this Thursday, our bids are due for the food management contract, and the interested bidders will be presenting to the East Bay Districts next Thursday in Barrington. And a decision will be made shortly thereafter.
And what communities have we in on with that?
Barrington, Portsmouth, Middletown, Little Compton. In the past, East Providence has been with us, but they opted to go their own route. Newport also uses the same food management company, but they're on a different cycle. But we anticipate them coming back into the fold eventually.
Good, thank you. Mr. Eret? Anybody else? Mr. Fazette?
Stewart High School and Fort Smith High School will be playing a abbreviated unified basketball game at the Ryan Center in between the two state championship games.
Oh, isn't that nice? That's wonderful.
Coming up in about two weeks on Saturday.
Oh, that's wonderful, thank you. Okay, a lot of good things tonight.